Okay, welcome everyone to Scranton City Council Public Caucus. Today is July 13, 2021. We have two guests with us tonight from the Chamber of Commerce, Bob Durkin, who we know very well, who's the President of the Chamber, and Amy Leister, who's the Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce. So, we have them both here today. They're going to give us some updates on things that are going on in the Chamber and how the Chamber is interacting with the city. So I'll turn it over to you and then we'll take any que-- you take any questions. Thank you.
Press it. I got it. I said I decided to run like Scranton this afternoon and I'm paying the price for it. You won't want to get too close. Anyway, well, thanks for giving us a few minutes. It's been way too long, but obviously COVID-19 threw a brick wall around a lot of the things we've all been doing. Quickly, as Bill suggested, I want to just give you sort of a framework of some of the things that we've been involved in over the last 15 months or so. And then Amy Leister is going to touch on a couple of different projects that I think are really important and timely in terms of where we sit as a community, as a county, as a region. So let me start with, you know, among the things that we've been doing, so to speak. At the Chamber, we have what we call our annual program of work. It's a work plan, strategic plan, where we lay out very clear and defined tasks, objectives for each year. And one of the members of our board continuously lately has been saying, well, once COVID hit, we had to throw out our program of work. And I keep having to poke him and remind him, I said, no, we didn't throw out the program of work. We did the entire program of work and then we also did all these other things, COVID-related. Specifically, we represented Lackawanna County and the Commonwealth on multiple grant programs for small businesses. Just sort of general round numbers, we distributed directly about $10 million worth of small business loans based on first the statewide small business grant program and then later the hospitality grants, most recently through Lackawanna County. It was not an easy task. Our Metro Action Team, which is generally involved in small business lending, became the core for that distribution. I'm proud to say that a substantial number of those grants went to Scranton-based businesses, though some and many were spread throughout the county or throughout the region. Among the other things we did, again, a number of Scranton-based businesses are borrowers under our Metro Action Program. Because we do small business loans, our team was successful in going out and identifying means to, in some cases defer, in other cases to eliminate monthly payments, as many as three to six months for a lot of our small businesses. Again, these were not easy tasks. There was a lot of heavy lifting to be done and it's shown a light on a number of different things that are going to be important to us moving forward. And I don't mean to, I'm not trying to emphasize the negative as much as the, as a need, which is to say, so many of our small businesses are not necessarily teed up to deal with technology at the highest order. So when suddenly these grant programs came out and we had to do as much as we could with the limited resources, so much was happening was online, so much of it was, you know, had to be information garnered from the various resources of the businesses. And a lot of them are just, you know, they're just mom and pop businesses, you know, they're not used to this stuff. And for those of us who have been involved in the public sector or business sector, you know, it's not necessarily intimidating, but it is for the small business. And so we had to go and do a lot of handholding. And I'm mentioning this mainly not because of the work that we did, but I think that the work that we want to do moving forward, working with City Hall, with Lackawanna County, with other agencies, is going to focus a lot on what can we do for those businesses moving forward? How do we help them move their games up? And I try to talk about this in the more positive future light because, you know, we've done so much on the COVID side and we'll still do a lot more before we're done, but we're trying our best to get back into the real world. And again, I'm very proud of the work that our team has done. We're very proud to have been able to help a lot of different businesses. By the way, one of the things I failed to mention was, over the course of the last year, we have been in direct contact with over 2,500 small businesses throughout our footprint, which is mainly Lackawanna County. Since the beginning of COVID, we made 8,000 direct contacts with businesses. In fact, one of the important things we did as well was early on, even though we're a membership-based organization, we said, we don't care. Put that aside, any business, whoever you are, member or not, gets exactly the same services. And that's the way we've continued to work in terms of addressing the COVID issues. So that's just sort of a little taste of some of the things we've been doing. We also launched into some regional activities, working with other chambers of commerce throughout northeastern Pennsylvania where we took the lead on educating them on the various programs, be it the federal programs, state programs, how they can deal with the health issues of COVID. And again, we're at the point right now where we feel we can start moving back into the real world. Another thing that really COVID brought, that the situation brought to us is this in-migration, as it were, of individuals either with ties to Scranton or educational experiences here in one way or another. And we feel that there's an opportunity here, a very important opportunity for us, to not only connect with these people in ways that Amy's going to tell you about in a second, but also more broadly, there are physical development opportunities, there are community development opportunities, a lot of different things that we can do, taking advantage of the fact that now Scranton, at one time considered as a second-tier city to the major cities, a place where maybe the best and brightest were going to leave, not necessarily stay, the best and brightest weren't necessarily going to move here. Well, now, guess what? We're exactly the place these people want to be. We are in a great position, both with the city and the county and our region, to be able to draw and attract the kind of talent that we want, not only for the work that we have now and the work in the future, but for entrepreneurial opportunities, to grow jobs, to grow businesses. And it's a really exciting place to be. So I probably stepped all over Amy's remarks here, but I'm going to ask her to tell you a little bit about at least one or two of those programs.
So Bob talked about how we, when COVID hit, we reached out to roughly 8,000 businesses throughout the course of a year and a half. And one of the things that we found that were probably pretty much uniform across all of them is the need for an available skilled workforce. And surprisingly, in some cases, some of the businesses had a need for business expansion because of COVID. We brought together then, through our Skills in Scranton staff, industry partnership meetings, where we met then individually with businesses, whether it's large, small, in various industry sectors, primarily those that are high priority occupation sectors here in Lackawanna County, and had specific one-on-one interviews with them, roundtables, if you will. Tell me what's going on with your company. What does your workforce look like? What are your infrastructure needs? What are your financial plans? Where do you see yourself in the next year? Whether you're going to be growing, you're going to be downsizing. And so out of that, I think the theme that emerged from that across every discussion was the need for workforce development in some way, shape, or form, and the development of a talent pipeline. So for the positions that they have right now that are immediate to fill, and then what does their workforce look like in the next five years, 10 years from now? So then it made us step back a little bit to say, okay, what does Skills in Scranton and our programming look like? So how do we develop our workforce development initiatives to meet the needs today and what does that look like five years from now? So I think in the short term, we launched a revised job board. So it's ScrantonChamber.com. I recommend anyone can go to the site. You do not need to be a Chamber member to post on our job board because there's an additional fee for that, but it's available there to anybody that has an open position that could post there. So I recommend any business within the city of Scranton can do so. We also launched a program called Workforce Wednesday. And why this was important, we did a couple things differently. Our businesses have the needs for a workforce now, so why, if I'm going to go to find a job, why am I going to go to business A versus business B? And it gives an opportunity every Wednesday for one of our member businesses to showcase what their corporate culture looks like, what positions they have available, what are the skill sets you need to progress and get a job within their company, and what is the upward mobility within their company? So we've launched those two. They're very strong. We anticipate that that's going to continue over the next year and grow that, especially Workforce Wednesday a little bit. Hi, Jessica, how are you?
How are you? Sorry that I'm late. Thank you for coming.
It's okay.
I've been looking forward to this.
I'm pleased to announce that on September 23, we're going to be having a job fair, well, workforce, 2020 Workforce Conference and Career Fair. And it's going to be at the Viewmont Mall. So we're recruiting for businesses now to purchase booths there, and then there's going to be a conference-type session where businesses can come and hear various talks on various topics. And then one of the next things we're doing under the Scranton Plan, which is our economic development marketing arm, is we've just received an LSA grant to do a remote worker talent attraction campaign. And one of the things we learned from all of those one-on-one businesses and those industry sector calls is, right now, our workforce pool is so big. We have a tremendous amount of growth that's happening currently from our existing businesses and then what are the companies that are moving into the area are going to bring additional jobs with that. So we need to be prepared to meet the needs of all and build a talent pipeline from there. And I don't know that right now we can do that without some outside recruitment. So that's the first thing. We're going to be doing some talent attraction over the next year. Also with that, COVID has shown that we're a tier-two city that's, you know, expanding and growing. There's a lot of excitement here in the city. Walk up and down the streets, you see all the renovation that's happening. That's attracting developers. Paper yesterday, John Basiliga, you know, you noticed that? I anticipate that that will happen again, so we want to make sure that we're spreading the word to other developers, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, that there's opportunities here. We have a tremendous network for some adaptive reuse. How do we capture that? So that will all be encompassing through our talent attraction workforce campaign. And then, of course, you know that we have the LERTA program and that's an added incentive for residential, commercial, and industrial-type businesses. Did I hit it all? Am I missing something? Oh, one more thing. RediscoverScranton.com. And that's our site that we're using and it's live, work, play, and there's a COVID safety. So that's where we're starting as our baseline.
Okay.
And one other item to point out, and that is the soon-to-be-launched, or soon, the RFP out for an Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city. We're pleased to have participated or contributed towards that. The $50,000 grant, the Chamber through our Economic Development Arm, SLIPCO, participating at $12,500, matching the Scrantonary Foundation, required local match on that. I'm really excited about that. Part of it is that I'm a bit of a planner. Ask Amy, she'll tell you that. You know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. And so with that in mind, we're really happy to see that the city is going to try to do, will be doing, an Economic Development Strategic Plan. For the longest time, under previous administration, I was trying to push the idea of a couple of key points that I think are really important. One is a plan. The other is recharging the redevelopment authority. And I think that that's something that you've been talking about and I believe that that's on the precipice of happening. And then partnering, you know, what we want to do is partner on this stuff. The Chamber is here to be a part of the community. You know, we're not government agency, but we're a nonprofit and actually we're a group of nonprofits. And through what we see as the opportunity of the strategic plan, we want to be able to work and specifically target, you know, hot zones, if you will, or specific businesses or areas of the city of Scranton where we think we can bring the greatest value. In a previous effort, and some of you, I think, Bill, I know you were around, and Kyle, I think, for the revitalization plan that we helped do a couple of years ago, that became a part of the Scranton Tomorrow's efforts. And as a part of that, a critical part of that, we've identified, you know, education and medicine, Eds and Meds, as a place or areas where we think we can see some real growth. We saw, we started to see a few things, like for example, when we continued to move the Mount Pleasant area with, working with Geisinger, you know, and now, you know, they still, we're still waiting for their, the third building to be built at Mount Pleasant, but they know it's become a medical hub and a great gateway into the downtown. So we've had some, you know, nominal success on that to this point. But what I'd like to see out of that plan, among other things, are real hardcore opportunities for us, for the Chamber, SLIPCO, Scranton Plan in terms of marketing, to get right in the trenches with the city, with what I hope will be reconstituted redevelopment authority. Let's do some real building projects where necessary. It's great to see what the John Basiligas and Charlie Jeffersons and Don Mamanos have done and Art Russo's done. They've done great work and they're there. They're strong and they're doing great private development. We know that there are some spaces where those folks really can't move, where, you know, industrial development might come into play. We want to see some advanced manufacturing opportunities, for example, with the residual benefit of multiplier jobs that come from that kind of activity. We just need to find the right spaces to do that. And I'm here to tell you right now that we're excited about the opportunity. We're prepared to be an active part of all that, that entire process, including development as we see fit, whatever comes out of that plan. So I'm throwing a lot of stuff out at you because we only have a few minutes, but I want you to know that we see the city as a strong partner. We're pleased with the relationship we have with the mayor and the administration, longstanding relationship, at least with, you know, pre-COVID, with Kyle and Bill and with the rest of you. You know, we haven't had a chance to talk too much since then, since you've come on. But we want to be a part of it. We want to be part, strong partners and bring strong quality jobs to the city of Scranton.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Durkin or Ms. Leister?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I just want to thank you for all the hard work, especially during COVID. So I appreciate it. And it was great to hear all that you did, done, that I wasn't even aware of. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I don't specifically have it in front of me. I did get an email from a citizen asking about, so I'm taking it to mean paragraph one of the revitalization plan. Can you address what's discussed in paragraph one? And I don't have the plan in front of me tonight.
The one that I mentioned, the downtown revitalization plan?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure if I could cite the first paragraph of it, but I can tell you in general what the idea was and is, is so, and I'll use my little aid here. So remember that the traditional footprint of the downtown, in its heyday of commerce and government, was really just the rectangular space, if you will, Jefferson to the river, maybe Mulberry or even Olive, you know, Inn. And that's what was downtown Scranton when, believe me, not you gentlemen, but guys like me, and maybe Frank, I hate to put you in my group, when we would come down to downtown Scranton for shopping and the like, that was, Scranton was the hub of retail commerce for the, not just the city and the county, but for the entire region. And when we took on that plan, and it was really Amy and I that managed that plan, we said, okay, let's not worry about what history says. What is happening now and what do we think can happen to grow the central business district? And we used that specifically. Instead of downtown, we said central business district. And that's where the Eds and Meds play came in. So we sort of drew a mental line, or I should say a semicircle, from Mount Pleasant with Geisinger's medical activities, looping around to the medical school, CHS with, you know, Regional and Moses, all the way up to CMC. And we looked within that space and saw the dynamic that's happening on the residential side, which we all know really came about originally as a result of the medical school. I mean, that was the catalyst for people moving into and developing the downtown residential scene. But it's gone well beyond that. And we think there are great opportunities to work with the university, Lackawanna, the medical college, on educational opportunities that may be, for example, spin-off research opportunities. Some of the most exciting things that are happening in, say, the city of Pittsburgh, wrap around Carnegie Mellon. And it's the idea of Carnegie Mellon with this brain trust of fantastic, you know, professorial talent and obviously students that are developing entrepreneurial opportunities that are tied to the schools. And we think there's an major opportunities for us to do that. And we have concurrence with the university, Lackawanna, and the medical school. And that was, for us on the development side, that's one of the most important parts of the whole plan. Now, there are other elements of the plan that Scranton Tomorrow's involved in. I'd rather not try to speak for them on it, like the Business Improvement District and some other key pieces of the downtown. But for us, because we sit in the economic development seat, we're looking at it and saying, what can we do? What kind of corridors, what kind of adaptive reuse of buildings, or things that we can do together to provide incentives to businesses to come into the downtown, to develop real quality jobs that are laden with successful, highly educated individuals?
When we did that document, we had 10 community-focused groups. And they ranged from the public sector at large to government, the educational community, the business community, to formulate what all of those action plans should be, what those objectives of that plan should be. And out of that came three core sectors, which was economic development, workforce development, and community development. And then the very last couple pages of that has all of the objectives laid out, all of the partners who gave input or signed onto that plan and whose responsibilities it was, or an area of focus which they played in one of those objectives. So on the back sheet, you'll see that. But it was really a true collaborative document that addressed the needs of many different organizations and many different sectors to go into that.
And we're going to see that document as a core part of the teaching plan, the economic development strategic plan. The mayor and Eileen Zimpreyani have already gathered all that information. So that'll be one of the key building blocks that'll be used as a start for that economic development plan.
Yeah. And we've had a couple successes out of that, too, since we've launched that. Like LERTA is a perfect example. That was one of the action items, I believe, in the plan.
And then paragraph two addresses marketing. So what's the Chamber expect to bring in in terms of marketing?
So from the Scranton Plan standpoint, our mission is to bring community investment and job creation at the end of the day. So that's how we measure our success of our programs. And that's based on a county-wide initiative. In our most recent plan, which is a five-year plan, which launches in 2021 and ends in '25, it's five years, the end results are, let me think here, 50 projects, $30 million in community investment, and 1,000, 5,000 jobs over a five-year period. And then we break that down over, you know, a yearly period.
Briefly about what the marketing is doing in New York metropolitan?
So we've done a couple things over the last couple of years. New York, New Jersey, in the last five years of roughly, I'm going to say, we've seen a lot of businesses that have moved in from the New York, New Jersey metro area. Crystal Windows is a perfect example of one of those companies, which is now up in Benton Park. So because of that, we are target marketing businesses within the boroughs of New York, Long Island, and northern New Jersey. That will continue as we move forward. Through the talent attraction campaign, we have been, we will be targeting individuals and residents that live in those areas, people that are entrepreneurs, people that are remote working, millennials, retirees, as a place for us to either move back or trying to connect with alumnis from the colleges and universities and market to them. So there's very different messaging to very different components of that in our marketing plan as we move forward. Am I missing anything? We have our website, ScrantonPlan.com, which has numerous demographic information on there and important information on what our area has to offer and how you relocate back or start a business. We are promoting heavily on our Ignite Program, which is our entrepreneurship initiative. So we're looking to expand that in the upcoming year. Lots, and our database, which is currently online, which is all the available real estate available in Lackawanna County, whether it's commercial or industrial or office, and that is available to anyone who has buildings or land available.
Okay. Thank you.
And then when it comes to the, in 2018, council authorized a 10-year LERTA. Can you give an update on the LERTA and how that's going, progressing?
Sure. So our role with that was working with city council to get it passed. Our role there, I think we went to several, no, let me start back. We hired the Institute for Public Policy to do a analysis of all the LERTAs that were available in Pennsylvania. And out of that, Philadelphia identified a tremendous amount of success, having a LERTA that encompassed residential, commercial, and industrial. And from there, we had several meetings with council. We developed out of plan, and that was to include a 10-year, 100% abatement on all three components. We then had to go to the school district, the county, and then city council, and they all passed. From there, we put together our website, ScrantonPlan.com. There's downloadable brochures on there for LERTA. It gives you an overview of what the program is about in a downloadable brochure. And then we worked with the city administration to identify someone within the city that would be the point of contact. So anytime I get a call or our office gets a call from someone who's interested, we answer the questions the best we can, and then we refer them to the contact at the city, who then guides them through the application process. So I know, I can tell you from our standpoint, we've gotten several calls over the last, over the launch. It's not overwhelming, unanimous or overwhelming that I would say it's blowing up, but that's part of marketing and you've got to anticipate that that moves slowly. And it's on our radar for this year as well, to utilize that in our marketing campaign. But I, you know, there's interest. And then where it stands right now as far as the application processes and what's coming to fruition, I'm not sure.
Tom, the, obviously, when you're trying to dissect what, you know, trying to get to a goal, in this case, we want to bring business and we want to get people moving back into the city, want to, you know, get people buying homes and improving their homes. And, you know, we can look at Philly, which we did, and said, well, there are pockets in Philadelphia that really succeeded because of the 10-year LERTA. We weren't expecting it to be a panacea, but we did look at it as one more opportunity to reduce some barriers for this. What I think, let's add, let's take that and add this sort of organic movement of people coming back to northeastern Pennsylvania that has been happening. And we've been working with the real estate community on this and they, you know, we all read about this and we're aware of it. Housing prices are rising and the building stock is relatively low, even in the city with some of the older housing stock. But we have to be honest with ourselves, don't we, and say, look at certain pockets of the city and the housing stock that's there. And it's more than just LERTA. LERTA can be one of the tools, but I'm going to suggest that the collective we think about this over the next year, perhaps through the economic development plan, but even beyond that. We're open to work on a lot of different fronts. I'm sort of imagining some opportunities where we can figure out what other incentives can we provide? We've, in fact, literally just today, I was talking to one of our leading realtors and I just, I threw that out to him and said, like, what else can we do? What else, what should we be doing? What are other successful communities doing? So I don't want to get ahead of the story because it's more conversation than it is any research, but he threw out two or three different initiatives that he's aware of in other cities that might fit very nicely here. Opportunities for taking areas, you know, I can't help, I don't want to, I don't want to name areas, but, you know, we all know that there are pockets in West Side and South Side and throughout the community, you know, throughout the entire city, where we go by these housing areas and you say, you know, my family, my mom's family's from West Side. I drive by some of these things and I say, what happened? Well, you know, time, this is what happens all over. It's an older community. It's not a Scranton problem uniquely, but it's just older communities. So I think it's time for us to start thinking about, are there some creative things that we can do that go beyond just the single house, go beyond just the single building? Coming up with ideas and plans that provide, you know, legitimate incentive without giving away the store, to see if we can get some people to come back in and improve those properties. Maybe, you know, well, whatever. I don't want to go any further than that, but I'm kind of excited about the prospect of doing this and being involved in the conversation and lending our resources to helping the city research what might be working in other communities. It's a great city. It's always been a great city and it's still the hub of Lackawanna County and it's the hub of northeastern Pennsylvania. So I don't want to sit here and act like there's nothing but problems. That's not true. We know, we've seen it in the downtown. If the downtown can do it, we can do it in other neighborhoods as well, including other economic development and industrial areas of the city. We just have to come up with some clever ideas and just flat out try them out.
So with that being said, what is the economic impact? And then how is that measured or how is it being measured of the LERTA?
It's not a Chamber program, it's a city program, so I guess you'd have to ask whoever is running it for the city.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Durkin and Ms. Leister, thank you so much for coming in. You do a wonderful job. It's been a pleasure working with you over the last few years and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you for your presentation.
I'd like to call this public meeting in order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, for all those who have passed away recently in our city and our community, and for all of those people who have been affected and who are suffering because of the pandemic? Thank you.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. Dunnehill.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here. Please dispense with a reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting held June 10, 2021. 3B, single tax office city funds distributed 2021 dated July 6, 2021. 3C, correspondence received from Lackawanna, Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority dated June 30, 2021 regarding 2020 audit report. 3D, minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority meeting held June 2, 2021. 3E, minutes of the Historical Architecture Review Board meeting held May 13, 2021. 3F, correspondence received from OECD Executive Director Eileen Cipriani dated July 8, 2021 regarding grants awarded to the city, city businesses, and community partners. 3G, correspondence received from Department of Licensing, Inspections and Permits dated July 9, 2021. 3H, sign inventory report received from DPW Director Tom Priambo regarding street sign update for 2021 through July 2, 2021. 3I, correspondence sent from Scranton City Council to Mr. Timothy L. De Four, PA Auditor General dated July 12, 2021 requesting a performance audit of the DEP approval of the Keystone Sanitary Landfills Phase III Expansion Application.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I just have one comment. I'd like to thank Director Cipriani for providing 3F, which is the list regarding the grants awarded to the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a quick comment. So 3G, and this is the first time I'm seeing this, where we get actual responses for concerns of blight and what other issues we send correspondence down to the city. Now we're getting actual feedback that's on record that we can see, and so can our constituents when they go in and take a look. I like, I know it's definitely new, because I haven't seen it before. I like it.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I want to thank Director Cipriani and the Licensing, Inspections and Permits Department. There was a gentleman, I think his name was George Semien, who came two or three weeks ago with several issues, as Councilman McAndrew had noted, regarding the downtown. And they addressed all of those concerns in third order tonight. So I do appreciate that. Also, I wanted to point out 3H. I had asked the DPW, Ms. Jeffries had asked for an update on the sign inventory in the city and the replacement of faded street signs and stop signs and whatnot. And I do want to thank Director Priambo for getting us a report through July of 2021 on what signs have been replaced. Also, I wanted to mention that 3I is the letter that was drafted by Solicitor Hayes. Council voted to send a letter to the Pennsylvania Auditor General requesting a performance audit of the DEP approval of the Keystone Sanitary Landfills Phase III Expansion Application. Our office has been in touch with the Auditor General's office, and they are reviewing our request. Anyone else? Do any council members have any announcements at this time? I have one. There is going to be a summer picnic held at the Waldorf Park on East Mountain in memory of Bill Tonkin, Sunday, August 15, 2021, rain or shine. This will be held from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. under the covered pavilion at the Tiki Bar, 13 Waldorf Lane. Tickets are $30 for adults, $15 for children 12 and under. Entertainment will be by EJ the DJ. There'll be picnic foods, hot and cold buffet, desserts, beer, wine, and soda. There's also a volleyball tournament and a basket raffle. For tickets, you can call 570-344-3931, extension one, or you can email S-E-R-V-S-E-N@epix, E-P-I-X dot N-E-T, and you can email them for any further information. Tickets are also available at the door, and the public is welcome. All of the proceeds will benefit programs at Serving Seniors Incorporated, and they'll follow CDC guidelines.
Hi. I have an announcement as well. There will be a fundraiser hosted for Shane Conway, who was diagnosed with brain cancer. It's the Stand for Shane fundraiser that's going to take place on Saturday, July 31, at the end of the month. This will be held at the FOP Lodge in Musick from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it's $20 if you pay ahead, $25 at the door. I believe you can donate through the GoFundMe page, Stand With Shane, or donations can be mailed to the Shane Conway Recovery Fund at PO Box 3482, Scranton, PA 18505. And I believe there'll be food and entertainment. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Quickly, to the South Scranton Menucha Hometown Heroes Banner Program will be accepting orders tomorrow, July 15, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Naught Park Community Room. Banners are $250 per banner, which covers the cost of installation and the banner. The last day to order is July 25, or earlier if they sell out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Volberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. The first speaker tonight is Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, Scranton. First, I'm still waiting for the collective bargaining agreements for the firefighters' union and single tax office to be reposted on the website. As of this morning, they were not there. Next, when will you hold a public caucus on the status of the Serenti Center and its past and future costs? Do you have a date?
Yeah, we don't have a date yet. That is being coordinated with the administration. I expect if it's not, it won't be next week, because the administration's coming in. If it's not the following week, it'll be in September.
Okay. Next, what is the mission of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority? And how does it differ from the proposed health department? I agree with the recent Times Tribune editorial that we need a county-level health department, not one that serves only the needs of Scrantonians. But I'm unclear on the, I honestly don't know what this health and welfare department does, if it's got the word "health" in there. Please, somebody explain to me what it does, what its primary mission is, and how it's going to differ from this proposed health department. Next, are there any plans to develop a countywide regional stormwater management authority? And if not, what is the status of Scranton's plans, if any? And finally, with regard to the correspondence from Lips that you referred to in third order, item 3G, violation letters were sent to at least three entities. Does Lips follow up these letters, or do they simply move on to the next situation? And is this contributing to our problems with lighted properties? Also, with regard to item 1F in their correspondence, resident claims sidewalks are being paved by various businesses downtown when they are required to repair sidewalks with concrete. This is Lips' response. Quote, "This is an issue that the city is aware of. The city is unable to order the business to change the work," unquote. So what happens next? Is the city going to do something that they can make a change, or create an ordinance, or we just suck it up? I don't know, you know. I was not impressed by the correspondence sent forth by Lips. It wasn't all that informative to me. Didn't look to me like it took a lot of time. And then the resolution requests cover sheets that you get on your legislation. Two of them for tonight from OECD. I sat down and read them, and I don't know, maybe they're informative for you on council, but I don't think they're that informative for the public. You know, just one-liners. It didn't seem that a lot of thought and effort went into them. And at the very end, you know, include any other pertinent details or relevant information that the council should be aware of. Okay, it's directed toward the council, but they should also be keeping in mind the fact that the general public is reading these. And not, you know, I, I don't know, maybe you and OECD have a secret code, you know, and it all makes sense to you. But I would like to see more on some of the answers provided. And I'm sure that all the departments are aware that this is going on item 3 in your third order, and will be read by some people in the audience. So. Also, I was surprised to see that Mr. Vasilega wants to build a 17-story high-rise where the red carpet inn stands today. Do you really think he needs a 17-story high-rise? I, you know, I wonder how he's going to fund that and where he's going to be looking for funding. And I think that may be a little bit overreach. I think some thought needs to go into that before he starts pouring concrete and paving sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening.
Scranton. And as all of you know, over the last, what, three, four years, I've been on a rampage about the street signs. I returned to Scranton, I grew up here in Scranton, and after I got married, I moved to South Jersey, down in the Cherry Hill area. And after I became a widow, I came back to Scranton. You always come back to Scranton for some reason or another. But when I returned, I just continuously got lost. And I'm only going through this because others may not know my story. And so I kept coming to council, giving them spreadsheets of streets that were missing street signs, because my GPS would tell me to take a right here, and there was no street sign. So, you know, I, council kept me informed as to how things were going. So finally, they did say that they had hired KNS Engineering to take care of our situation. To me, I kept thinking, what is that ever going to do to help us to find our city's streets and all? So they finished their project, and they put up a database with all the missing signs, you know, and still, I'm still not seeing any signs on the street. So let's fast forward to two weeks ago. I received a call from DPW, and I'm thinking, what the devil do they ever want to call me for? You know, what did I ever say at council? So it was Tom Priambo in his office calling, and they wanted to give me a tour. Well, I was going to be out of town the week that they wanted me to come down, but I did go last week. And I stand here tonight to say that they have an awesome operation down there. They have all the equipment to make the signs, and they took me through and showed the material that they make the signs with. And it's very updated. It's going to be, it's reflective of the streets and the sun so that it can last longer, so that our children, well, not my children, but my grandchildren and any of those coming along, those street signs should last for quite a while. So we shouldn't have the problem that we're having today. And the thing that really blew my mind completely was that Mr. Priambo did show me the database, and, you know, it was just so interesting to see that. And there was 90,000 signs and street signs that are in that database. I was like, 90,000? Do we even have that many corners and streets in Scranton? But I guess we do. So that was a good $280,000 or whatever it was that was spent on that database, because after it's up, they do have a personnel that goes in, and they update that database with any street signs that need to be, that have been replaced. And he told me, they said, start looking around, and you'll see them. And I did. If, for the people out there, for the general public, you know, look around, because your street signs are going up, and they are busy making them. The team down there, they need help. There's only, I think there was like four people that was there, and one was part-time or something like that. But I ask you, council, and to anyone else that's on with the budget for 2022, if you could add some personnel, because to get to those 90,000 entries on that database, we will be, from here to kingdom come, getting it done. And we all deserve to see good street signs, good stop signs as we go around, as for our safety, as we go and we proceed, you know. And I read the paper where these big businesses want to build new buildings and apartments and everything. That's all part of it, to make our streets and very visible to the public. So again, I just want to thank Tom Priambo and Celeste as supervisor that took me on the tour, and everyone was just so gracious to me. I even had a jacket, you know, one of the jackets that they wear. And I had one of those, and it was great. So I do thank them for that. And just one other thing that just blew my mind. I was never close to a DPW trash truck. They are huge, you know, and I stood there, and, because we were going around the whole place. And I thought, wow, you know, you see them from the distance when they take your trash. But that was my first experience being close up to them. And they are huge. And it's quite an operation down there on, is it Poplar Street? I think it is. So I just stand here to say thank you to everyone down there, the DPW, and to let the cities, the citizens of Scranton, the residents of Scranton know that work is being done, and their signs are going to be going up. Okay?
Thank you very much, Ms. Jeffries. We appreciate it. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here tonight is that before this council goes on its break, I think it should sit down with the mayor and have a discussion about allowing people to put their name on the ballot, to do a study of the charter, so that the residents can determine whether they want to change the charter or abolish the charter. A lot of people come here and ask questions of this council, and they don't get answers. But if this charter is rewritten in a certain way, there'll be no need to come and ask council any questions that have anything to do with city business, because the residents of this city can write a charter that would allow them to see anything legal by law for them to view by just rewriting the charter. It can also give them tools to hold council members and the mayor accountable to the public by writing it into the charter. They can change almost everything about this city government in that charter and solve all the city's problems just with one stroke. And I think that that's something that this city should really consider, considering that the mayor and the council should be empowering the residents of this city to make the changes necessary to make Scranton a prosperous community once again, as it has never been that in my entire lifetime. We do study after study and squander millions and millions of dollars, and the effect is blight, mismanagement, corruption, and a host of other things. And I just think it's time to put the ball back in the court of the residents and let them make a decision on the amount of taxation they want to pay, the direction they want their city to go in. And I hope someone in the school board would stand up and do something for the children in this district who are being short-changed educationally by picking up an ink pen and taking yourself downtown to the courthouse. The other thing is that today, in 6A, we're going to, I guess... The other thing is that today in 6A, we're going to, I guess, consider something, naming something after Joseph Biden, the President of the United States. And I'd like this council to vote no on that, and I have a host of reasons why. I think this president is a divider. I also think that this president is misleading the American people on a host of different things. He's fighting an audit of the presidential election and the right of the people to know how the votes were cast, where they were cast, and if they were real. Not only is he doing that, but he's allowed our border to sit open as people cross the border. And in my opinion, people are losing their children to fentanyl-based heroin, and fentanyl is streaming across our border. 61% of women have been sexually assaulted that come across that border. These are statistics, okay? We need to take a good look at why the state of Texas is trying to stop the flow of illegal people across our borders, and not just Mexican people, but people from all over the world. And I think that the one thing the government was founded for was to protect its residents. We see a host of other things he's presented, none of them good. And when the things he says are studied under light, they find that they're not true. His whole administration is falling apart, and I just hope that, you know, some of the people would wake up and see that it's all right to name things people after people when they're deceased, but not when they're alive, and not when there's so much controversy tied to them. Now, there's not one street in this country from Wikipedia, because before I came here, I asked that question. There's not one street named after this man in this country. And do we want to name a street after a man tied up in so much controversy and later find out that he's just misused his office? Don't forget that his son has acknowledged that he's taken money from Mexico, Ukraine, Russia, and he's used it to live on. Think about that as the President of the United States and Vice President. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ron Elman.
Hello, Council. It's nice to see some fresh new faces out here, isn't it, in the audience? You know, I think there's a difference between criticizing someone and badmouthing them. I wasn't badmouthing the mayor last week. I'm not mad at her about nothing yet. That's the way things have gone. I hope she can terminate this firework sales. There's just nothing, nothing good about fireworks. I appreciate her interest in trying to save these foreclosed houses. I think Mr. Shapiro needs to come in here and do something about this 10% lawyer's fee before it ends up like the sewer authority just enriching a bunch of attorneys. But as I remember, I think it was three years ago, the county commissioners had litigation that limited it to 5%. Am I wrong, or, anyway, that's, I remember from years ago, it went on. You're talking about the most precious thing that people ever have, and to make it harder, they've gone through enough, and the few that attempt to save their homes, it seems like everybody's against them. I haven't run into anybody yet. I know there's a couple organizations to help them. I have talked to a couple people at the grocery store that are just really against renaming a street after Biden, when there's so many locations that wouldn't cause all this chaos. And while I think of it, I walk my little puppy every day up at Western Park. Yesterday, the pool was open, and today it was closed. Does that cause a lifeguard problem? I didn't know.
Yes.
There was very few people there yesterday. I didn't know it was open till I went up there. You know, you had such a good idea last year, paying to have them go to school so they could work. I don't know what happened with it. It just seems like young people don't want to work. Next door to me are a bunch of people from, not Spain. Anyway, they can't speak a word of English, and they try to tell me. They clean offices at night, they come and go all night long. They are the hardest-working little guys, and they don't, they just don't give a problem one. They've been there four, five years, and there's no radios blaring, no, they bring my garbage cans up, and just all kinds of help like that. There's a young boy that walks up and back to the grocery store. I asked him this winter if he wanted to do my snow. I had a snow blower, isn't that? You know, all he had to do was push it for $10 or $15. I never see nothing like it. When I was young, we used to caddy nine-holes for a quarter. That's when you had to carry them, they didn't have anything. Now nobody wants to do nothing. I tried to get a boy this week to change a tire on my son's truck. He didn't even ask me when I'd pay him. He's just said no. I don't know where you're going to find lifeguards. It's a shame, there's so much work went into that pool, because I passed there every single day and saw him working on it, emptied it and cleaned it. What a waste, what a waste. Anyway, it's hard for me to explain the difference between criticism, maybe my criticisms are too harsh or something.
Thank you, Ms. Elman.
What do you think?
No, I think you're fine. I think you're pleasant.
It's time to shut up and sit down, I know. I hear that every.
You said that, not me.
I think you've got a loaded clock, is what I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Danielle Fleming.
Hello, Council. My name is Danielle Fleming, and I own Nodology and Olfactif with my husband, Mark Bonfilio. We are proud Scranton business owners. We're on the corner of Wyoming and Spruce, if you're not familiar with us. And I'm here to just voice some concerns about renaming Spruce Street to Biden, I'm not sure what it's going to be, Biden Way. It poses a couple issues for us as business owners. The first part is sort of the obvious one with marketing, is that we have to change every single printed material that has our address on it. Just for example, I printed out Everything for Holiday last week, and that was to the tune of $1,000 that would have to be reprinted. So it's all of our marketing materials, it's every single piece that we print with our names, that's sort of an obvious one. There's also a lot of time that goes into it. It's not just simply reprinting. We'd have to work with our graphic designers to have everything reprinted again. And then we'd have to contact all of our suppliers with our new address, which, free, but putting them all together, we probably have over 200 different suppliers that we work with that we would need to contact. But probably the most significant impact for us, and I do want to say too, is we're on the corner of Wyoming and Spruce, and we go from 401 to 405 with our two businesses, Nodology and Olfactif. So we have a significant real estate on that corner, and we have spent, we've been there eight years now. We have spent a lot of money on SEO and so it's search engine optimization, as well as geo-targeting to get people to come to that corner, to come into our store. Our experience is about where you can come in and make your own perfume with our scent designers. We get people coming from all over the country for that experience. Last time we calculated, I think 36 states have been represented in our shop. Also, we have people coming all over from Europe, actually, surprising to us. So to do that, though, we have spent significant monies in geo-targeting and in search engine optimization to get recognized, so that when you're searching for things to do in Scranton, that we pop up. So that would all have to change, because we would have to really erase the eight years of that work and put it towards the new address. So it's something that we've built proudly, and we don't quite understand why it would have to all be erased when we can just do the Scranton Expressway, the Central Expressway, where it would not affect any of the business owners. We would stay as Spruce, nothing has to be changed, no time has to be put in, no extra money has to be spent, no work has to be redone, and it can just be on the Scranton Expressway, which we 100% support and are proud of the fact that Biden is from Scranton, but it would not adversely affect the businesses that are on Spruce. So we are asking that you would reconsider naming the Spruce Street portion of the ordinance that you're looking to put into play. I believe that is it. Yes, that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mark.
He just signed in with me.
Oh, okay.
For the first time, so we're good.
Okay, all right. I didn't want to mispronounce his last name. Next speaker is David Dodson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dodson. The last speaker had some pretty pressing. I had a small mailbox in a small town up in Susquehanna County, and I'd get all this mail, and I was only there on Saturday morning to pick it up. And I had my checks and everything else printed up with my address, Box 36, and I received a sermon just about every day I walked in there. Years back, many years back, I mentioned on lifeguards, would it be possible to set up a lifeguard course for senior students at the high school, maybe swim team or something like that, that they could train in the wintertime? And possibly then we would have lifeguards, because we never have lifeguards. Every year, it's been the same story, and the pool's open late and they close in the middle of August. And a thought popped into my head last week on that IT business. We always hear about all of this possible help from the colleges and universities. Could we possibly get some freebies from the Scranton University to provide courses to advance people that already work in City Hall and qualify them for to move up over the years? And also possibly lend us a hand with something like the IT department? It's an interesting thought. It's been said time and time again that we should go to the Scranton University for help with accounting and things, and I don't know if our last mayor was interested in anybody looking into books, but that's besides the point. It's something that could be done and should be done. In the automotive field, your employer is also responsible for new model training and everything else. So not that you really get it. It's usually learn while you lose program. That's besides the point, too. Once again, the COVID cases are on the uptick slightly, and I think we'll see more. And please vaccinate. It would be terrible to see after these last 15 months that we're right back at square one, maybe next spring or something like that. Not good. Once again, contact your congressman, 1-884-533-211, 2-022-224-3121, or 2-022-225-3121, and push the For the People Act. I don't know if you've seen the news, but in Texas, the people from Texas are AWOL, the Democrats from the Texas Congress, and they can't pass voter suppression laws and all of these ridiculous things. I mean, they're trying to make it a criminal thing for you to just do the wrong thing sitting there passing out ballots and taking signatures. It's totally ridiculous, and it's undemocratic. We have two senators. If you could contact Manchin and Sinema and put that filibuster aside, especially for voting, it's, everybody should have the right to vote. I don't care if I buy a ticket scratch-off and it drops out of my pocket and there's somebody sipping out of a bottle down at the courthouse, and it turns out to be a $50,000 winner, they have to pay taxes on that. And that being said, anybody that is tax-able, not tax-paying, but taxable, should have the right to vote. I mean, there's a man was put, he had a month and a half of parole, and he's possibly going to serve 40 years in Texas.
Thank you.
For voting.
Thank you.
He had a month and a half to go, so it's getting down to the wire. Have a good one.
Have a good night. Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Coyne.
Tom Coyne Menucha. Speaking of extra training, it came to my mind, as I was thinking last week, we're moving towards a .gov platform for our infrastructure, for our electronics and presentation in Scranton. It would be nice if the mayor or council got together with a city who is already on that platform, whether they're mayor or whatever legislative body is on there, and formed an internship between them, so that our people who are not trained in it because it's not present can go down there and actually view a live system beforehand and get a little hands-on, or at least some observation of how the system works before they're presented with it. This would give them a wider scope, and the platform actually provided a list of cities and governments who are actually on that platform. It makes eminent sense for people who are going to be thrown into the deep end of the pool beforehand if we can ease them in by sending them off to a live presentation of actual data being done by a city that's using this platform and viewing it themselves. The Averro contract, I find it putting it, that it's putting the horse before the cart. We have Bedrock currently running the IT and infrastructure. I would love to see from them a mapping of what, where they think we should be going. They've been working with the city for months now. They should have a concept of what the city needs, what change it needs, where it's lacking in infrastructure, because they're now supporting it. Even if we don't have people in our own IT department who can give that map out, they're getting paid $12,750 a year for this input. We might as well use that input, since it's not, as Averro, a per-hour contract, it's a flat fee. Tap into that resource a little bit and see if they can. a flat fee. Tap into that resource a little bit and see if they can at least give us a direction before we throw more money at the situation. I understand the $50,000 is a grant. I don't understand if that $50,000 grant is specific to this contract or could be used for any other contract along the way, or any other project that might be more beneficial for the city. I don't know the boundaries of the Act 47 grant itself, as they haven't been made public. It's just there's a grant out there that's been directed towards this. Last for Biden Way. I do understand the impact for the city residents on business and streets. There's a lot in business branding. There's a lot that's involved in paperwork. The mail service gets confused for delivering packages to homes that have been there for 50 years, and they have a new mailman, and it arrives at a neighbor or some other street. Oak Avenue winds up at Oak Street. Now we're changing streets in businesses. Sarcastically, I think the highway is the best naming for it, because at 11 years old, he was on the highway out of Scranton. I support Biden. I support the direction of this, but I don't think it is in the best interests of the businesses and the city involved to have the local streets named after President Biden. I think it would be better just for the highway. And because I had extra time last week, I'm off early. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. That exhausty sign-in sheet, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
Marie Schumacher. First, I would like to say that I hope that the Stormwater Report from HRG will be available before you all go on your August recess. I also hope that when you return in September, that the sound system is improved. I have high hopes for that, but, I mean, I came tonight because I was very interested in what the chamber had to say, and I heard nothing, absolutely nothing back there. I tried to change. But anyway, and it doesn't really matter, but we need to be able to, we need improvement in this body. I also want to state that I do agree with Lee Morgan. It's time for a review. We have not had anything since the, I think it was 2001, 2002, and I think it's time we have a review. Now, moving on to 6A. Our forefathers were named streets. They named them for common things, and they named them for extraordinary people. The Alakawana Avenue was based on a, an Indian name, I believe, that word meaning stream that forks. So that was named after the river. And then we go down, of course, we go Jefferson, Adams, Wyoming. Wyoming, again, is another word that comes from the Indians. It was first used by whites as the name for a valley in Pennsylvania where a portion of the Delaware Tribe of the Indians lived. And that is how Wyoming gets in. Mifflin, of course, was a delegate, as you probably already know, back when they taught school. I think you all went, when they taught civics. But he was a signer of the, went to the Philadelphia Convention and signed the United States Constitution. When you go the other direction, get away from the avenues and you go to the streets, they were for trees, starting with spruce, which, as we all know, is a, is a very, I think, at least, a majestic, tall evergreen. Then you go from spruce to linden to mulberry to vine to olive to pine, myrtle, ash, poplar, walnut, larch, and all of those are trees, the names of trees. And that is something that everybody can get behind. I, I believe that this whole thing has been, and 6A has been poorly done. The, the handpicked committee, I think we all knew going in what they would come out with, and I don't think there were any parameters for why it was due to, and I don't think, I did not see in a legal notice for any public input from average citizens or from the businesses, which fortunately, at least one is here tonight. So I think you all look, look at, at a man and want to reward him for have, for things that he had nothing to do with, where he was born. It's where his mother was, in Scranton. And things he other had, otherwise had no, no control over. Where his grandparents came from, because they came from the same whatever place in, in Ireland, nothing that he did. And I think the basis for such an endeavor is of this is something that should be done for something extraordinary. And I don't think we've seen any extraordinary, and I do believe it's divisive and that you've jumped the gun and should wait until the Commander in Chief is out of office, at least, if not deceased. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Alex Mulfett is downtown Scranton.
Just, excuse me, the clock didn't start yet. That's okay. Go ahead.
Council President, you know, esteemed members of council, I'm here to, before you today regarding resolution or Council Number 77 of 2021, which is to be approved to change the name of Spruce Street in downtown Scranton to Biden Street based on the report and recommendation of an ad hoc committee for exploring the feasibility of renaming Prominent Roadway in honor of United States President Joseph R. Biden Jr. The report is dated June 30th, 2021. The committee recommended naming Spruce Street as opposed to the original idea of Wyoming Avenue after our President Joseph R. Biden. The committee cited several criteria in which they based their decision. Most notably, quote, "Spruce Street is only comprised of six blocks. Renaming this roadway would have limited impact on city residents and businesses who need to change their mailing address," end quote. They also stated, quote, "Because Spruce Street is a city street, no approval from PennDOT or other state agencies would be required to name it. Lastly, Spruce Street's existing name has no historical or cultural significance to Scranton," end quote. Finally, they state that, open quote, "We believe that renaming two roadways in honor of President Biden is both appropriate and feasible. The committee recognizes that there will be residents and businesses situated along Spruce Street who were required to change their address and stationery and websites. However, we believe the long-term benefits of celebrating Scranton's important role in the formation of a U.S. President and the historical tourism it could bring will outweigh the short-term inconvenience caused by this name change," end quote. Myself, along with many other businesses and residents of the city, only became aware of this change to Spruce Street recently due to an article published in the Scranton Times on Saturday, July 3, 2021. In response, I am providing the following information and evidence clearly showing this resolution should not be passed renaming Spruce Street or any other street in downtown's business district, but only done on the Central Scranton Expressway. It is important for you to understand that this is in no way political, or a suggestion that it would not be appropriate to name something in the city to honor our President Joseph R. Biden Jr. It just should not be Spruce Street or any street in the downtown district. I could say this comfortably, knowing that as elected city council members, your stated duty is to represent the best interests of your fellow citizens, businesses, and stakeholders in the city. And I know that the overwhelming majority of citizens, businesses, and stakeholders directly affected by the name change are opposed. I could state this because I've spent at least the last five days talking to and meeting with residents and businesses located on Spruce Street, as well as listening to their complaints of direct opposition to the name change. Everyone does agree that naming the expressway would be appropriate and of much greater value. That is the first signage that people see when they come into our city, much like the Welcome to Scranton in the opening segment of The Office. In support of this opposition, I have obtained many signatures on a petition for businesses and residents at Spruce Street who are directly impacted and oppose the name change. I can also state that over 100 people that I have interacted with across party lines cannot see the value in making this change. There are also those on Spruce Street who are functionally afraid to let their voices be heard for fear that it may have a negative impact on their business. I know that this is not what any one of you on council would want. The statement that this change would have limited impact is only, and is only about address changes is not the case. The statement that Spruce Street has no historical or cultural significance to Scranton is also not the case. Also, no one understands how changing the name will result in long-term benefits, or, yeah, long-term benefits to residents and businesses on Spruce Street or in the downtown that will outweigh the burdens of this change. Finally, it is not right to say to businesses that this is a short-term inconvenience when in fact it's much more than that. It is a financial as well as time, resource, or time and resource burden. I've had a few business owners confide in me that they would rather spend the money to relocate their business outside of Scranton if this change happens. Rather than go on, I had a list prepared. I don't have as much time as I thought, and all are supported by the attached petition that I'd emailed. And, you know, I'm here to, you know, be the voice for my fellow residents in downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Thank you. Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
No, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
I do. It has been brought to my attention on Ninth and Einan, that there is a stop sign. I don't know if it's, if it's not visible enough. I know there's been some situations. Three cars have ran that stop sign and hit a, actually hit a house on a property. So, you know, a concerned resident reached out to me. If, Mr. Waldenberg, maybe you can send some correspondence to the police department. Maybe they need to check and see if anything's obstructing this stop sign, and maybe at crosswalks, paint it like the city has done recently, and I think that might be a help, if you could please do that. And secondly, I asked for a job description for the new business manager. Up close to four weeks now, I think. Have we heard anything yet?
Nothing yet, Mr. McAndrew.
Can you please inquire again?
First thing tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That is all I have.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. I was contacted by a resident who is involved with this Grant and Little League, and there were some issues and concerns with Harmon Fields that she's been working on for quite some time and trying to contact the city about. They're, they're working on getting grants in order to pay for new LED lights on the field and also for handicap-accessible bathrooms, which are appropriate, considering they also host the Challenger League for, for children with, with disabilities at that location. And I would request that we send correspondence to Mary Pat Ward and Brooke Newhart. Those were the people that she was in touch with, that I'd like to get an update from on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
Yeah, just quickly, going off of what Mr. Elman brought up about Weston Park Pool. It was closed for a couple of weeks, but due to our lack of lifeguards, we will, the city will be opening Western, Weston Park Pool on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 12 to 6. And Connel Park Pool is open in Southside on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 12 to 6. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I have quite a few. So the first thing that I wanted to mention tonight was that we are, we did receive word back from the DPW director. We, council had requested a public caucus with the DPW on several matters. They are not available to meet with, meet with us in the next two weeks, so we're going to see if we can have a public caucus in September. Mr. Perimbo did call me yesterday, and I did not get a chance to call him back yet, but I will call him tomorrow. And while we're on that topic, I, I am going to have, I am going to have a conversation with the mayor. We talked about it last year around this time about having a public caucus with all of the department heads to give us an update on things going on within their department and how the departments are progressing, at least quarterly, I think would be a very, very good idea. I've, I've said that, said that in the past through different administrations, and it has not happened. But I do think the last time I spoke with Mayor Cagnetti about it, she was very receptive to it. If we do a quarterly, that way it's built in, and we won't always have to be asking all of these questions. A lot of the departments in the city do a lot of great things, and I think that they should come before council and have that interaction with us. They do this at county commissioner meetings, school board meetings, and I think that we should do it here in the city. As I mentioned earlier, we are still waiting on a date for the caucus regarding the Sereni Center and when that will be scheduled. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you can just double-check on that. I'm assuming that it probably will end up being in September since we are on recess in the month of August. I did speak with Larry West, the business administrator, recently, and they are trying to put together a caucus, which will also probably be in September at this point, regarding the Meadowbrook Creek Project. Council was supposed to have a meeting on the status of upgrades to the Naog Pool and regarding the study that was completed. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you can check on that. I did have a meeting scheduled, but it had to be, had to be canceled. So if we could try to reschedule that. We had, within the last two or three months, have had several discussions regarding the very comprehensive study that was produced regarding the Naog Pool, and I think everyone is disappointed that it's not open, but is very hopeful on what it's going to look like if we can put funding into that, into that pool. I received a complaint about the 1800 block of Clearview Street. A hose broke on a DPW truck and hydraulic fluid sprayed all over homes and properties there. The DPW was out to clean it up. I was out there this past weekend after a neighbor had stopped me, and they do have several questions. So I, we did send correspondence to Mr. Perimbo at the DPW, and I'm going to get in touch with him tomorrow for further information on that. And then I had also recommended that they go out and meet with the neighbors. They did clean it up, but the one woman, I was at her house, the roof is damaged, the pavement is, has, has marks on it, the lawns are ruined, and some of the shrubbery and other things have, have been damaged. So there's still questions about that incident. Also, received a complaint from several residents in Manuka about the CVS on Davis Street. Mr. Waldenberg, if we can please send a correspondence to the Lips Department to send an inspector out there to cite them. They've been, apparently warned repeatedly about weeds and sumac and other things that are littering the area around the, the business, and the people in Manuka are not happy about that. So if we could send something to licensing and inspections, I would appreciate it. Also, the intersections of Clay Avenue and Vine Street, the crosswalks have been painted, so I want to thank the DPW for that. That is a dangerous intersection in which there was a, a very serious accident recently. Council received a flooding complaint at 1248 Snyder Avenue. We did alert the DPW, who has already, as we found out, been in contact with, with the resident. So we're hoping that that can be taken care of as well. I also received a call from a resident on East Mountain who's concerned about Wintermantle Avenue. It was just paved, and work is going to be apparently performed by the utility companies. So we have asked, Mr. Waldenberg has asked the DPW to look into this. I did ask, within the past few weeks, about why the city has not utilized $50,000 that council specifically put in the budget in Parks and Recreation for summer help for our park system. We did receive a response from Mr. Perimbo. He stated that they reviewed the 2020 budget amendments and found the $50,000 increase He stated that they reviewed the 2020 budget amendments and found the $50,000 increase made to the other salary in Parks and Recreation line item 4040. The information related to this increase and purpose was not clearly relayed to the department. We can't find any memos or backup to support employees cutting grasses, as was the intent of the funding increase. However, with council's inquiry and clarity at this time, we have assigned a summer help employee to the park maintenance team. I just want to clarify one thing. Council was very clear with the mayor and the administration that what that funding was supposed to be used for. I am, as I stated previously, disappointed that it's taken this much time to hire one person. We put $50,000 in there so that we could hire several people to help the park system. One additional person is great, but it's not going to cut it. We have 30-some parks, and the people we have doing the work now do a great job, but they do need additional help. So, hopefully, that can be fixed, and by next year, we have a full complement of a summer program working on the parks. And we also did send a request in for a stop sign replacement at the intersection of Dorothy Street and James Robeson Way. And that's all I have. Thank you.
5B for introduction, a resolution approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and the area served by Marywood University to have the project provided by and financed through the authority and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, similar to the piece that we have in Seventh Order, which Solicitor Hayes got additional information on in terms of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority, I think we should request the same thing with this project. It was a little light on details. And in terms of Ms. Hodowanis's questions, we will get those answers for you and a detailed explanation of what that authority exactly does. In terms of things that I've seen the authority responsible for over the years, it has been almost as a pass-through for financing of different projects. But they should have a mission statement and values and things like that. So, we'll get that to you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into an agreement with Scranton Area Foundation, Inc. to establish the City of Scranton American Rescue Plan Grant Fund, a pass-through fund which will distribute grants to various small business, nonprofit community organization, and other eligible entities throughout the city of Scranton as part of the City of Scranton American Rescue Plan Grant Fund due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, first of all, I am thrilled that we are allotting $3 million from the American Rescue Package that was passed by President Biden and Congress in order to help our small businesses in the city of Scranton. I think this is going to go a long way, just like the funding from the CARES Act. I did speak to the mayor earlier today, and the mayor and other city officials are going to come to a caucus next week to discuss this agenda item and the use of the $3 million with council. They're also going to discuss the use of the additional monies that are coming into the city from the American Rescue Package. And they're also going to discuss how those funds are, potentially how those funds are going to be used and the rules that are apparently still being finalized. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Fourth Economy Consulting, Inc. to provide strategic economic development planning services.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I would just like to say how excited I am about voting on this today and to get this started, because I think it's what we need. We need to boost our economy here. We need to bring in more businesses. And I think we, we need a plan on how to do that. And I don't remember the last time that we, we had one of those. So, I'd be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution appointing Robert Gowan Collins, 1105 Woodlawn Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the zoning hearing board for the city of Scranton. Mr. Gowan Collins will fill the unexpired term of Paul Marks, which will expire on July 1st, 2023.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution appointing James McDermott, 1210 Woodlawn Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the zoning hearing board for the city of Scranton. Mr. McDermott will replace Carrie Newcomb, whose term expired on June 30th, 2021. Mr. McDermott's term will expire on July 1st, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution appointing Albert D. Young, 1713 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as alternate number one of the zoning hearing board for the city of Scranton. Mr. Young will replace Pratitia Patel, whose term expired on July 1st, 2020. Mr. Young's term will expire on July 1st, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution appointing Tucker Hoots, 1226 Penn Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as alternate number two of the zoning hearing board for the city of Scranton. Mr. Hoots' term will expire on July 1st, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I want to thank everyone for their interest in these positions on the zoning board. As everyone knows, the zoning board is a very, very important board within the city that makes sometimes crucial decisions about different things in our neighborhoods. So, I do want to thank everyone that showed their interest and everyone that ultimately was chosen for these positions. There were several people who submitted their resumes and letters of interest after the deadline. We will consider those individuals, and we appreciate their interest if there is future openings for the zoning board. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, File of the Council Number 77, 2021, and ordinance authorizing the renaming of Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway in honor of United States President Joseph R. Biden Jr.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A, pass reading by title.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? On the question, a few things. So, first of all, I want to thank each member of city council who has shown their support for this measure over the last few months. I also want to thank every member of the committee who has put in a lot of work on this change that I think will eventually be beneficial. No matter your political affiliation, I think we all can admit the extraordinary nature of President Biden's ascension from the city of Scranton to the U.S. Senate, the vice presidency, and now the highest office in the land, the presidency of the United States. President Biden has made Scranton not just the focus of the country at times, but also the entire globe because of his love, affection, and respect for his hometown. Therefore, I, along with my colleagues on council and the committee that we put together to study this issue in depth, find it appropriate to rename the Central Scranton Expressway and Spruce Street after President Biden. I personally do not think that we should settle for anything less or be weary of making this change. Remember, in the past, city fathers honored Presidents Washington, Adams, Jefferson, Madison, Monroe, Taylor, Harrison, Arthur. Shouldn't we bestow the same honor on a president who was born in St. Mary's Hospital in Southside and grew up on North Washington Avenue in Greenridge? I appreciate the business owners that came tonight, and I think we all sympathize with them and their, any experience that they have in any inconvenience because of this change. And I can assure everyone that in speaking with the mayor and the business administrator and Leslie Collins from Scranton tomorrow, that we are all going to work with them to alleviate any inconveniences. I also want to note that I have heard from hundreds and hundreds of people across the city who support this and several businesses on Spruce Street who support the measure as well. We took everything into consideration as we were going through the process. As I mentioned, Leslie Collins from Scranton tomorrow on our committee, was on our committee, who has a great rapport with the small business community and who endorsed this plan wholeheartedly. I believe very strongly that this will, in the grand scheme of things, within the big picture, actually enhance historical tourism in Scranton and in the long term will actually benefit the businesses in the downtown and on Spruce Street. This isn't, you know, renaming a street isn't unique just to Scranton. This is done all over the country. It's been done thousands and thousands of times. I really think that we should celebrate the fact that President Biden grew up in Scranton and has really, I think, made each of us proud to be Scrantonians. In terms of some of the, the address changes, we did check with our city planner, Don King. Once this change is made, it's not like it's, everyone's going to have to change their address immediately. They, we will work with the post office. I believe there's a year grace period. Also, as I mentioned, the administration has assured me, and I will assure the business owners, that we will work with them to alleviate any inconveniences. On our agenda tonight, we have $3 million that we're using from the ARP funds for four small businesses. We're going to discuss that with the mayor next week. But in, again, in the grand scheme of things, this is going to be a good thing for the city of Scranton. Also, there was a comment made tonight that this just kind of popped out of nowhere on, in a newspaper article on July 3rd. There was an article previous to that, I believe, on the front page that we were seriously considering Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway. So, again, I, we certainly, the committee and council does not take this lightly. But in the, again, in the big picture, this is to honor a man who is the President of the United States, who grew up in the city of Scranton, and I think it's appropriate to do that. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, File of the Council Number 76, 2021, amending File of the Council Number 56, 2021, as amended, which amend File of the Council Number 8, 1987, and File of the Council Number 87, 1976, entitled, Providing for the Levy and Collection of a License for All Performers, Entertainers, Sporting Teams, Musical Groups, Bands, Theatrical Cast, Dancing Groups, Recital Groups, Paid Lecturers, and Speakers by Increasing Fees to Reduce the One-Day Fee in Section 3 from $50 to $20 Due to the COVID-19 Pandemic.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gowan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 188, 2021, authorizing the city of Scranton to accept a grant from the Moses Taylor Foundation, the purpose of which is to support the city's efforts to improve the health and wellness of the people of northeastern Pennsylvania.
What is a, excuse me, what is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, there's several things with this, with Item 7B that I find issue with. Normally, I'd be in favor of accepting a grant from the city, but it seems the contents of this grant have already been spelled out for what they're going to be used for. So, several issues for me were that the position isn't included in the Home Rule Charter. Secondly, the person was hired from outside of the city with no residency waiver. There's been no posting or no bidding on the position, and we really haven't been presented how this position's going to be funded once the grant is depleted. So, I feel at this point, we should be looking to control costs in this budget rather than adding to the budget. So, I'd like to make a motion to table until the administration could provide how we will fund this moving past the three years of this grant.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table Agenda Item 7B. On the question?
I too, on the question, have some concerns. So, this was presented to us initially as a hire because there was a interview process. There was a job description for this position too. But this, this person was interviewed. And for the most part, my interpretation proposed as an employee. Well, in essence, it's a private contractor. So, contracted service have to be put, should be bid out. I don't know if this falls under professional services or it'll be claimed that, you know, professional service, we don't have to bid out. Just because you don't have to doesn't mean out of transparency you should. Then it was brought to us, okay, we're not going to, they're not going to get a W-2 or benefits, so they're not technically an employee. But then I look at the, the actual contract, and it says that this, this individual has to provide their own liability, their liability insurance. Has that been done yet? We don't know that. So, I have some other questions, and I too am concerned about duplication of services between the county and the city because we had this conversation before the budget. We said, you know what? Let's wait for the county. They have authority. This person will not have any authority within the capacity of her job. So, and I know, I'm all for education and awareness. I'm an educator, but I believe, you know, the $300,000 over, over three years could be, could be spent on, on things that are better or provide better, better programs for the, for the health, safety, and welfare, and not just PR, because, you know, we have three hospitals that we can reach out to that can provide us education and awareness for free. It's done at the school level. I just think that this money could be better spent on other programs because when I look at the proposal or the grant, it, the grant doesn't say anything about health coordinator. That piece comes from administration. So, the grant from Moses never lists a position associated with the grant just, just to help with the health, welfare of our community. So, I have some questions. Obviously, I just probably talked too long, but I'm in favor of tabling this. So, the administration can clarify some of these for us before we go forward with this.
Thank you. I would agree. I'll vote to table it. I'm in favor, obviously, of this position due to the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I do think there's value there. But I do think that Councilman Schuster and Councilman McAndrew have made valid points. And one of the points that they made, I think, does make sense in terms of after the three-year grant is up, how will we fund this position? What is the plan to fund this position? What is the plan to fund the salary and the benefits? So, I don't see any harm in tabling this. And the mayor is coming next week along with other members of her administration. And I think, Mr. Waldenberg, if this does get tabled, if you can give them a heads up that we would also like to discuss this piece so that they come, you know, prepared for that. But I will vote to table it. Anyone else on the question? Okay, there's been a motion, a second on the question. All those in favor of tabling Agenda Item 7B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and Agenda Item 7B is hereby tabled.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, Resolution Number 189, 2021, approving in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority, and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for O.S. Johnson Technical Institute, TDBA, Johnson College.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I requested some more information about this project, which we did receive and have had a chance to review, and I think it'll be a great addition to Johnson College's campus, and I look forward to seeing the development of the project.
Thank you, and I do want to thank Dr. Rothschild for making the, the request for, for more information on that. It was very informative. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution Number 173, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and averro advisors to provide business process digitization support to the city of Scranton for its new operating platform.
Just on this piece, we are still working on amending it and potentially discussing it before the August recess, and also, Mr. Volenberg, if we can add 7B to Eighth Order for next week, the, the piece that was tabled. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.[1775.41]